Here.
Here.
Here. Dr. Kyle, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up is communication with our host school. So we have Holly Zimmer here to talk with us about Hawthorne.
Good evening. Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Schuler, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm thrilled to share some of the wonderful things happening at Hawthorne Elementary School this year. At Hawthorne, we have 13 unique languages spoken. We have 10 active clubs this year, and our main focus has been on learning acceleration and connectedness. Connectedness and relationships are the foundation for Hawthorne's success. Our social emotional learning committee consists of nine members of our team who meet monthly to support adult and student social emotional learning at Hawthorne. Students are presented with an SEL lesson at the beginning of the school year. After that, they're surveyed to ensure that they do have a trusted adult at Hawthorne. Our surveys are analyzed by our team members and then follow up as timely with any student that may need support. In addition to our students, our teachers are surveyed every year. Our survey is how well do you know the students? We take a staff meeting in the winter and place pictures of the students around the tables, and teachers and staff take time to check off if they know the child's face, if they know the child's name, if they know a fact about the child, an academic fact or a personal fact about them. This information is also analyzed by our team and brought back to the staff. This is powerful when we have it. It allows us to make informed decisions about who needs more at school. Our community partnerships this year have been essential. We work closely with World Relief, Exodus, and Outreach for tutoring. We work with High Point over the summer for summer programs for our students, and we also are fortunate enough to have blessings in a backpack as a weekend food program for our students. In addition to our community partnerships, all of our clubs run with parent and staff support. Clubs are held before, during, and after school to ensure equitable opportunities for all students. One of the clubs I wanted to highlight tonight is something that emerged before pandemic and then kind of out of the pandemic as well. Hawthorne and Wheaton North Buddies was formerly known as Homework Club at Hawthorne. We used to work with Wheaton College. Now we've partnered up during the pandemic, we partnered up virtually with Wheaton North High School. And this year, we meet in person on Wednesdays and started in October and will finish up this month. High school students come to Hawthorne. They have snack with our students after school. They read stories with them. They offer tutoring, and they play games. This is an amazing opportunity for our students, for the social emotional learning and the academic support. In addition to this club, we have chorus, craft club, patrol, running club, student council, stock market club, New Hawks Club, garden club, and chess club. Hawthorne began this year with learning acceleration in mind. Key components to this were our coaches. Reading and math coaches support accelerated learning, keeping students moving forward on their grade level trajectories by strategically preparing them for success in current grade level curriculum. This is done with the classroom and team support. Planning for learning acceleration means that all team members take a student-centered approach. In math, it was essential to have our math coach, our multilingual learner teacher, and our special education teachers as a part of our team. Learning acceleration prepared our students for new learning combined with the just-in-time teaching of concepts in the purposeful context of our current lessons. Teams meet regularly and use pre-assessments and ongoing formative assessments to accelerate learning. This model enables us to consistently keep our focus where it should be, on our students. As I shared in the last slide, learning acceleration occurs with a team approach to ensure that students get what they need when they need it. This required a mindset shift. Our teachers at Hawthorne believe that all students can grow and learn at high levels. We use high-quality instruction that engages all learners in mathematical discussions and facilitates learning through student discourse. In this picture, you see that happening. This is a group of students working through the same problem, using multiple solutions, and taking time to engage with one another in flexible ways. Students believe that they can grow and learn through perseverance, flexibility, and engaging in mathematical discourse. There's a focus on who is doing the heavy lifting at Hawthorne, which reinforces the belief that we have in our students' ability to problem solve. Through our math coaches' support this year and our math interventionist support of implementing the eight effective mathematical teaching practices, our students are able to analyze, compare one another's work, and persevere. To accelerate learning, we had to shift our mindset and our instructional practices. Our students believe that they can learn and grow because they demonstrate their ability to be flexible in math. The last piece I want to share with you this evening is a brief explanation on these shifts and how we've used them at Hawthorne in the classroom. They have had a positive impact on our students. Our math coach, Michelle Fitzenreiter, has been instrumental in ensuring these practices are part of everyday instruction at Hawthorne in grades K through 5. So I'm going to go through each shift here and just kind of explain what it means and how you would see this in the classroom. So students and teachers are going from show and tell, which means that students just share answers, to share and compare, which means that students take time to share, listen, honor, and critique each other's work. They clarify and deepen their mathematical understanding. The second shift says questions that seek answers. This means that teachers might pose closed or low-level questions. We want to move that to questions that deepen understanding. They advance student thinking and promote meaningful reflection. The third one is something that we used to see a lot. Students replicate procedures. This goes back to the speed and accuracy goal, something that we are changing. We want to see students select efficient strategies. This goal is to engage students in mathematical problems, develop flexibility in math, and give them opportunities to evaluate one another's This next one says math made easy. This means that we used to just want students to reach solutions as quick as possible. We want our students at Hawthorne to know that math takes time. It's good when your teacher questions and encourages, provides time, and puts value in learning from mistakes and multiple attempts. It's wonderful when we start to see students doing this with one another. We want to move from looking at correct answers to looking for specific strategies and representations. We want students to engage in discourse around their thinking. The last shift we focused on was teaching about representations and moving teaching through representations. This means typically you would see a teacher showing a student how to create a representation through a graph or a picture. Not at Hawthorne. This picture represents how we do it. Teachers use lesson goals to strategically highlight student work and make time to compare and connect representations related to mathematical concepts. This is the same problem, but students are solving it in multiple ways. At Hawthorne, our next steps and our goals for next year are to continue to expand opportunities to collaborate with our math coach, incorporate math language routines into our day, expand opportunities for collaboration among teacher teams, and this includes our special education teams and our multilingual learner teachers. Finally, we want to ensure that we support implementation of our new mathematical instructional This last picture, the middle one, is from our New Hawks Club, which is a new club we started this year for any student that's been at Hawthorne less than two years. They're allowed to bring buddies to the club. The club over, the one on the right here, is a picture of Homework Club, and the students were making Valentines for one another. Homework Club is also below that. And then over on the left, you'll see that we have our Wheaton North Football Day, where Wheaton North High School football players come and run the students through all sorts of football activities, and it makes for a really fun day. It was fun to bring that back this year. And the last one is a picture of what Halloween looked like this year at Hawthorne. So thank you for the opportunity to share some of the work we are proud of at Hawthorne Elementary School this year.
Thank you for sharing with us about Hawthorne. Next up is, are there any modifications to the agenda?
I'm Chris. Can we move consent agenda item number three to an action item?
Okay, so consent number three to an action. Any other modifications to the agenda? Okay, Board President Report. I just have one thing to share. So I think it was about two weeks ago, I had the opportunity to sit down with Tom Bertrand, the president of IASB, with a few other large unit presidents, and just talk about, you know, issues that are unique to large districts. And we have been having some kind of ongoing conversation now for the past year with IASB. One of the things being, we are different than a lot of other districts when we are a large district, and talking a little bit about representation, also about the delegate assembly. Looks like there are going to be some fairly significant changes to the resolution process. Right now, they're looking to have, make sure that resolutions need to be aligned to the core values and the legislative priorities of IASB. It's going to also, they're looking at more than a simple majority to pass. Actually, I believe they came up with 13 recommendations to the Board of Directors. There was a committee of representation. There was a large district representative as well on that committee, and the board has accepted all the recommendations. So we anticipate later this month seeing some changes coming about in terms of that. So I'm excited about that. So that's all that I have, Dr. Schuler.
Hey, Chris, can I comment on that as well?
Yes.
So thanks for sharing that about the delegate process. Just for reference for the board members, that's a process that dates actually all the way back to when Jim Vromen was president and having attended a couple of the delegate votes and got a couple of other peer benchmark board presidents charged up. And so it's good to know that, I don't know, five, six years later, that there's change happening for the others.
Great. Dr. Schuler.
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. So as my quick update comes up on the screen, I just want to start with a couple of updates that are early in the slide. I had an opportunity earlier today to attend a recognition event through IESA, which is a professional organization that belonged to annually. We have an opportunity to bring and recognize a couple of volunteers within the school district. And so I was joined this morning at that recognition event by Ally Ioli, who is the president of our PTA Council. Ally really stepped up this year as they had a kind of an unexpected opportunity for a new council president, and she stepped up, filled that role, has done a great job, and certainly has been a great resource for our PTAs, which I think the board is well aware, a tremendous resource for the school district. Ally actually learned this morning, in addition to being the PTA Council president, has stepped up and subbed in the district this year as we've needed her. Really has just been a tremendous resource at this school district. So I was pleased to take Ally to that breakfast. Second person that I took with me was Stephanie Mangini. Stephanie is retiring this year from Jefferson Early Childhood Center, and I think as the board is well aware, that was a long journey to get the new building at Jefferson, but Stephanie has continued to be the consummate leader of that building. She has led that program, I think, in really extraordinary ways, both up until the opportunity we were able to construct the building, but has continued to lead that staff as they've occupied that new space. And so it was my pleasure to thank and recognize both of them for their contributions to the school district. Kind of in that season where a lot of our recognition events are going to start at our schools, if your schedule allows, next week on the 20th, PTA Council is doing their annual scholarship breakfast. Really a nice opportunity. They recognize and give scholarships to lots of students from both Wheaton North and Wheaton Warrenville South, scholarships that come from each of our individual PTAs, as well as the council gives out some scholarships. So I think you got a calendar invite to that. Just if your schedule allows, it really is a nice event, and that kind of serves as the kickoff for quickly, we get into the month of May and have lots of other great opportunities in our buildings as well. Which kind of leads me to the third piece, which is probably a good time to think about reaching out to some of your adopted schools. As we approach the end of the year, lots of fun activities to close out the year, again, both in terms of student recognition opportunities. I know that our PTAs have been very active in planning their kind of regular end-of-the-year events, as well as kind of the student closure activities. So maybe consider reaching out to some of your adopted schools to see if there's a fun opportunity as we hit the month of May or the end of May to swing by and see some of our students or staff or our parents. And then finally, I just want to mention that on the 19th and the 21st of April, we are doing two strategic planning input sessions with our community. I think as the board is aware, we've been soliciting input in a variety of ways, but we have two open sessions for our community, one at Monroe on the 19th, one at Edison on the 21st, that I wanted to mention and update. I'll move now just very quickly into my monthly COVID data report, and I say quickly because it is really not showing a lot of information that varies significantly from the data I shared with you last month in the month of March, but I'm going to run through it with you quickly. So first, just reporting kind of weekly our case data. What you can see is from that kind of peak in early January, we kind of slowly came down off the peak and have leveled off. Our student case activity this week is actually a little higher than it was last week, but again, kind of in the two weeks that followed spring break, we really didn't see any type of significant rebound. You see that both in our weekly trend data and our data by school as of noon today. Case per 100,000 really follows the same pattern, and what you see as you look out to the right is that that's held pretty steady. I did hear today, I think Dr. Sloggy had passed along an article that indicated that I don't believe IDPH is going to continue to track cases on a daily basis. Anymore, they're going to default to a less frequent reporting structure. So I don't actually know that this data point will even be available to us on a daily basis moving Vaccination data has really held pretty steady. I think we've kind of reached what I think is kind of a peak point in that about every four weeks, we see a slight uptick of a percentage. It takes about four weeks for the numbers to accumulate. So what you actually see in that, which kind of makes sense, is that both our partially and our full vaccination rates are now pretty close to each other based on that delay. So elementary, about 66%, partially vaccinated, middle school, about 78%, and high school, about 84%. And again, that's held pretty steady. We do continue to do any outbreak investigation. We haven't had to do them in both, I think, the week leading up to spring break and the two weeks since spring break. We have not had significant case activity in one spot that has led for the need to do an outbreak investigation, but we do continue to track that should we need to. And then as we continue to run that MIT tool in the background, it shows us that we are well above that threshold that we set. Also have not seen, as we've tracked, both hospitalization, ICU, non-ICU data have not seen significant adjustment or concern, I think, as of the 12th, ICU bed utilization in our region's at 67%, which is comfortably under the threshold. Should also just mention, as I bring closure to this regular monthly report, we did make some adjustments right in front of and then following spring break, both our elementary and our middle schools, we readjusted back to our traditional lunch spaces and our traditional lunch tables. Certainly at the elementary building and actually at a couple of our middle schools, that's allowed us to recapture some space that were previously being used for lunchroom, and now we've been able to transition those back to whatever the kind of original intent of that education space is. We reopened our drinking fountains, made a few other adjustments, and again, as we've made those changes, have not seen any significant issue as a result. So that is really my report for this month. My recommendation for the board, our next board meeting, would be the middle of May. I guess at the pleasure of the board, I can either bring you a final update in May. I don't think we're seeing significant adjustment that it's necessary to report this information under my report, but if the board would like me to, I can do it. If not, I guess my recommendation is that unless we see some significant adjustment that I think makes it necessary to share with you an update, I would recommend the superintendent report. We simply shift back to stuff that's going on in our schools, so.
Questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I was thinking the same thing as you were giving the report. I support that unless something, like you said, something significant happens, we should be updated, but I don't think it's something we need to do every month at this point.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, next up is public comments. accordance with board policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment sign-up sheet was made available until 7:00 PM. Board members are available for viewing via the live stream of the district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comments until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or of a direct response following public comments does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. For board policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened. We will not be doing that tonight. I'll still stay at three minutes. To preserve the confidentiality, the board and its president require that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future close session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name and whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments, please, to three minutes. We have a new timing system here. Mr. Hanlon will be counting down. You can keep an eye on the clock there, and when it gets down to zero, Mr. Hanlon or I will give a reminder at the end. Please be factual and courteous. Do not include statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. The first person is Ruth Julian.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. You know, it's not easy. I just got back this past weekend from a civil rights tour. We went to Birmingham, Montgomery, Selma, Memphis, and Ferguson in four days. It's interesting how historically our society and culture has placed incredible responsibility on the shoulders of some young children and yet shelter others. We have all seen pictures of ruby bridges, eight years old, walking bravely into school escorted by federal marshals. Other schools closed for the whole year so that they would not have to integrate. Parents did not want their white children to have to learn with black children. It's important for us to look back into history so that we will not repeat it. A temptation for us today is to protect some of our children while silencing and shunning other children who have different experiences. Talking about banning books tonight. Banning books might make some of our parents feel safer about what their kids are learning, but what will it do for other children and for all children? Studies, like the one done by the Trevor Project, show that if a child has even one supportive adult, one accepting adult, they were 40% less likely to report a suicide attempt in the past year. Protecting some children put others at risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Greg Higgins.
Good evening, Superintendent Schuler. I'm the board. Good to see you again. I won't be very long. I kind of signed up just in case somebody else was here, so they're not here, so I don't have to talk so much. But keeping with what the previous speaker was saying, I wanted to continue that discussion that we talked about in the last board meeting, which is the next thing that's going to come and to attack you all. I think you all do a good job of what you do on a general basis, and I want you to always remember that most of us out here are happy with that. That's because we're not here complaining all the time. But when they're coming, I'm not here, because I might not be here. Most of their attacks on books, as the previous speaker was saying, is based on their particular viewpoints, usually religiously based. They're scared. They're scared about what something is going to make their child do or not do, what's going to show them, something is going to make them do something they weren't normally going to do. And I wanted to put a few thoughts in your head when those times come, that they're worried about things like, well, you know, we talked about different genders. You talk about different sexual types. You talk about different trans issues, all these things that's going to show them that somehow that's going to make them different. And I would suggest to you that children that are gay or trans or have other issues in their lives that are different from normal straight people, they grew up their whole life watching typical straight heterosexual TV, movies, et cetera. life watching typical straight heterosexual TV movies, et cetera, and it doesn't make them straight. But they see a little lot more of that than they do of anything that's homosexual or other LGBTQ issues. So why would showing them something that educates them on the reality of life, on the reality of people that they will meet in their life, would somehow make them different than they are? Why would that happen? And if we're going to talk about their concerns about religion, it's usually religiously based, which I'm not here to attack their religion. But if it is religiously based, let's talk about religion. I went to Catholic school my whole life, mostly boys' schools too. I didn't want a girl was, so I went to college. And it was really devastating for me at the time, actually. So I'm kind of glad that I now have an education school system that is very diverse. And I'm glad that my kids get to grow up in a system that's very diverse that I didn't get to do. And I think about all the things I read in the Bible when I was a kid. Did they let me read in the Bible? And there's a lot of things in the Bible that are not particularly good to talk about. There's a lot of sex in the Bible. There's a lot of verses that say slavery is good and slaves should be good to their master, should listen to their master. There's a whole lot of things about sex of various kinds, but nobody in here that comes up here will tell you, well, I don't want my kid to learn from the Bible. They won't say that. So when those discussions happen, I just want you to remember that, keep that in mind. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Emily Walker.
Just want to first of all say thank you for a great district. We have really appreciated it over the years. And I am here today to persuade you to add Mandarin Chinese to the District 200 curriculum. The District 200 website says that the world language instruction enhances a student's ability to be effective in a multilingual global society. The website also says that communication with others is the goal, whether they are on another continent, across town, or within the neighborhood. Mandarin Chinese is spoken by 14% of the world's population, second only to English at 16%. Chinese language ability provides access to the third largest country in the world and the second biggest economy after the United States. Business leaders are sent to China and Taiwan frequently and have many Chinese business connections. Learning Chinese, even at a basic level, would begin to open global doors to students from District 200. Locally, there are significant Chinese populations nearby. If you've been to the new Costco in Naperville, you can see H Mart is next door, and there are plenty of Chinese businesses around. Local school districts, including Elmhurst, Glenbard, and both Naperville districts, have already begun offering Chinese in high school. I taught English in Taiwan during college for six months and then later moved with my husband to Taiwan for almost a year. We had our first child at a hospital in Taipei. In our experience, our meager, really, really meager attempts to speak their language were always met with joy and surprise and friendship. Even a few phrases like how to say, oh, that was delicious, or thank you, they were always met with just openness and they would be used, they would open up relationship opportunities. Since moving back to the United States, I've studied Chinese off and on. I found it a very logical language with easy to understand basic grammar. Reading characters is of course a challenge, but there is an internationally recognized system called Pinyin that allows beginners to read Chinese phonetically. Even characters become attainable once you study how they're put together. So we have six kids. Our oldest is a freshman at South, and several of our younger kids, and he used to also, our freshmen also used to, have been learning Chinese at home, and I meet weekly with a tutor. My hope is that by the time my current freshman, who absolutely loves learning Chinese, reaches high school, that there will be a Mandarin class for her to join. From my own experience attempting to learn multiple languages, it is almost impossible to retain a language if you don't use it. If she gets to high school and has to fulfill the language requirement by taking Spanish or French or German, nothing against those, just advocating for Chinese, if she has to take one of those, she will most likely lose all of the Chinese she has gained. Gifting Mandarin Chinese to the District 200 student population would be a dynamic tool for the influential interaction with the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our consent agenda. Approval of illustrative math for K5. Approval of FLESS grades two and three Spanish language arts curriculum. Approval of updated 2022, I'm sorry, that one we pulled off. Number three, correct?
Correct.
Pardon me?
Yeah, got moved.
Okay. Approval of ROE permits for summer 2022 HVAC work at Wheaton-Warnville South High School and Sandberg Elementary. Approval of the city of Wheaton and CUSD 200 updated intergovernmental agreement for the purchase of fuel between both parties with an effective date of May 1st, 2022. Approval of sanitary sewer easement agreement with Wheaton Sanitary District for Emerson Elementary School. Approval of transportation contract extension with Illinois Central School Bus LLC. Approval of transportation contract extension with Sunrise Southwest LLC. Approval of single student and small group student transportation services contract extension with Citizens Taxi Dispatch, Inc. Approval of resolution appointing treasurer, approving the treasurer's bond and special issue bond for lease certificates. Continuing approval of treasurer's bond coverage. Approval of network equipment for transition center. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of minutes, March 9th, 2022, open and closed, and approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to November 2020 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel report to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any other items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other further information?
No, just an introduction on the personnel report, and actually, there's another item on the consent agenda that has to do with the resolution for treasurer's bond. So Dr. O'Keefe is playing two roles for the balance of the year as he's filling in for our comptroller, but we're really pleased this evening to recommend to the board the appointment of our next comptroller, who's here this evening, Jordan Thors. And then also approving on your consent agenda, the appointment of Leslie Springer to our special education department. So two key leadership roles that I just wanted to make mention of. And then last little piece, a number of things on the approvals this evening that come out of the business office. And I do appreciate both Dr. O'Keefe and his department's work, both with a number of those approvals, but especially the project with Wheaton Sanitary District. Their great intergovernmental cooperation to help that project move along, which is of great benefit to the community. But by our willingness to work together, we're also seeing some improvements at Emerson. There'll be a short disruption this summer as some of that work is done, but when the work is done, both as a result of the new sanitary pipe and the reconstruction they're going to do, we're going to see a new playground, see a new fence, see a new ball field, and some other improvements over at that site paid for by the sanitary district. So I'll mention that.
Any questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
Just a comment, and I think I asked this by email, for the item number 12 of the network equipment at the transition center, it's not listed in the agenda, but the dollar amount we're approving is $3,192. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Just want to make that public.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so consent agenda passes. Next up is our first action item, adoption of the resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff. Dr. Schuler, any questions or comments?
Both this item and the next one are equal personnel actions that the board has taken. And I think just one quick mention because the question was asked a couple of times. As we talk a lot about staffing shortages and some of what's coming at us, I absolutely understand the question of, should we do this in light of the fact that we may be hiring some of the teachers back? Just two things that I'll point out. This year, we did hire a number of teachers on one-year contracts, two reasons. One, we added some positions as a result of the federal relief dollars. We also maintained very low class sizes this year, and not that we're fully bouncing back from that, but your staffing plan was a little heavier this year than it would normally be. So as we're rolling enrollment numbers up, we do want to make absolutely certain that you are not overstaffed, that you're not carrying positions that you would not need if you do not take this action today, you carry that contract into next year regardless. So totally understand that question, just please know that we're not letting go of anybody, that we are going to potentially need a day or two later. So we are confident in our ability to continue to staff those positions. So I would recommend that you approve this resolution to make sure that we're prepared going into the staffing season.
Questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I'm sorry, Chris, just a question that came to mind when you were explaining that. So how are we deciding to increase class sizes for the next school year? I know that they were smaller this year, but could we benefit from another year of smaller class sizes?
They're still going to be very low. So I want to be really, really careful that I'm not suggesting to you we're bouncing right back to the ranges that we were, but artificially through at least the two years of the pandemic altered experience and spacing, we were very low. We were carrying extra staff for the purpose of being able to navigate through the year. So again, I don't want to communicate a message that we're going right back to where we were, but we're not carrying some of the same extra capacity that we were through the last two years.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of full-time first, second, and third-year non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of Illinois School Code Section 24-11 as presented.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booten. Seconded by Mr. Hanlon. Oh, Mr. Paulson, I'm sorry. Who was it?
I moved.
Oh, you moved, okay. Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Booten. Okay, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next up is adoption of resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff. I think you already shared with us, Dr. Schuler.
I did, yeah, no additional information.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to adopt a resolution authorizing non-reemployment of part-time, non-tenured certified staff and authorizing notification according to the requirements of Illinois School Code Section 24-11 as presented. Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Next up is approval of Department of Innovation and Technology Network Refresh. See, Mr. Spencer's walking up there.
Good evening, board. As you might recall, a few board meetings ago, Dr. O'Keefe during his budget presentation kind of laid the groundwork of a potential million-dollar allocation to help us get to a baseline for all of our network infrastructure. So tonight, what I plan to do is give you some additional context of where that million dollars is being allocated and how we're going to fund this particular project. So what I want to walk the board through tonight is the total cost of the project all in, the main pieces of hardware that we'll be buying, and in kind of what purpose they serve in our district, what funding sources we're going to use to fund this project, and then an overall summary of why this work is important at this point in time. So all in, the cost of this project is about $1.7 million. So this money, all in, will get all of the equipment that runs any piece of equipment that either connects to the internet via wireless connection or hardwired connection. The amount of equipment to make a district of this size work is going to cost about $1.7 million. So while there are a lot of pieces of equipment that go into being able to connect to the internet either wirelessly or via hardwired connection, the two main pieces of equipment that we're purchasing through this allocation and the most costly of all of them are network switches and access points. So if you look up on the ceiling right here, this little box with the blue light, that's an access point. So when you walk into a building, anything that you have that's wireless, that's how you're getting the internet right now. So every building, every school in our district has multiple access points, in some cases, one per classroom. So when you multiply all that out across the size of our district, it's a lot of access points. All of those access points go to a closet with something called a switch. So all of these access points get connected to something central. So each building also needs a series of switches. So think of the network like a big wheel, right? So the SSC is where all of our internet kind of traffic flows through, and then Hubble here is our fallback location in case something should happen at the SSC. So the current landscape right now, and the reason why this is kind of important right now, is because, as I mentioned in the master technology plan a couple of board meetings ago, is that a lot of our switches and access points are reaching end of life. The industry standard, we're told, is that an access point should last between five and seven years. In some cases, we're going on 11 in some of our buildings. So while they still work as devices, get more and more up to speed and they're given different protocols, you could just find yourself in a situation where the consistency of the Wi-Fi isn't where we would like it. And also keep in mind, this is the first full year where students are not only probably bringing a personal device, their phone with them, but they're also now bringing in a Chromebook. So there are just a lot more devices that are now being connected to our network. So how are we paying? The big question, how are we paying for this? Well, some good news here. So breaking down this $1.7 million price tag for this project, about a little under $700,000 is going to be reimbursed to the district through a federal program called E-Rate. So there are certain qualifications about what the government will reimburse, and there's, you know, without getting into the weeds, we were able to get reimbursed for about seven, almost a little under $700,000 out of that $1.7 million total. The way that this usually works is that we pay that $689,000 and change upfront, and then later on in the year, we get reimbursed from the government when they release those funds. $1 million out of that $1.7, we have found through SIR II and ARP SIR funds. Going through some of those funds, we realized that things that we had thought we might have needed came in low, so there was money still able to be utilized within our federal grant monies. So the balance after E-Rate and after our grant funds of about $64,000 and change will come from our department budget. And so just wrapping up about the necessity of this network refresh is that, like I mentioned, there are other And so just wrapping up about the necessity of this network refresh is that, like I mentioned, there are other things that are included, not just switches and access points, but those are the two big ones. But given the current size of the department budget, it does become difficult to replace equipment on a predictable refresh cycle. So our purpose of this is to establish a baseline for all network equipment. We want to get to the point where we're not always playing catch-up with the network. We don't want to get into a situation where something, you know, happens with the network and we're not prepared, or we have to scramble to replace equipment, and then that kind of disrupts the learning experience. So moving forward, you know, pending board approval here, we hope to now be on a more consistent schedule, and moving forward, any update to network equipment will come out of our department budget. So this is a kind of a one-time allocation through grant funds. We'll always, hopefully, fingers crossed, have E-Rate to also offset some of those costs, but this will get us to a baseline so that we can then establish a more predictable refresh cycle. And with that, any questions?
Questions or comments for Mr. Spencer?
What's the timeline?
So honestly, we're going to, we can order as soon as tonight, you know, if pending approval, but with supply chain what it is, it all depends when things come in, but we, fingers crossed, we hope we can get all this work done over the summer.
Are you replacing all of the switches and access points?
Not all of them. There are a couple of buildings, Hubble in particular, had their switch already replaced because they're the fallback option. So they got theirs replaced when we did the SSC upgrade. So there are a couple of buildings that don't need to be replaced, but in large part, the majority of buildings, yes, will have switches replaced.
And so then other things, you know, that you mentioned, I'm assuming there's some other network infrastructure that's not being handled right now? Or is this the majority? But where I'm going with it is we're going to have this slug of money right now, $1.7 million with a life of five to seven years.
Right.
Low spending for the first two or three years, and then you're going to have some stuff start to fail. But then in seven years, are we going to be faced with a...
So only the switches and the access point have the five to seven. Other things have longer lifespans, other things have lower lifespans. But I've worked with the department to now set us on a cycle of when we should start now replacing everything. So we should never get to the point where we're falling behind anymore.
And you reference, I think you talked about this before, but moving forward and given an increase in the network hardware budget, how much of an increase are we talking about?
So right now, we're allocated $300,000 for network equipment. Given the current cost of network equipment and to place us on a predictable refresh cycle, we would probably want to see that increase to about $410,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, just a quick question. I had a similar supply chain question, but thanks for answering that. And just for my own clarification, are we doing all schools? Because if you read the proposals, only talking about the two high schools and three other middle schools besides this building, unless I missed it.
So it all depends on what's being done. Every building will be touched in some form or fashion. It just depends on if it's switches, if it's access points, if it's UPS, like battery backups. So there might be some buildings that have more work than other buildings, but each building will be touched in some form or fashion unless, like I explained to Mr. Long, there are buildings that have already been upgraded that we don't have to do as much work with.
So is the more comprehensive work being done at those five buildings, the two high schools and the three middle schools?
Correct.
Other than Hubble?
Yeah, those buildings that you identified are like almost complete overhauls.
Because they have more devices, more kids.
Correct. And they're bigger, so they have more access points. South, both high schools also have multiple closets, so with multiple switches.
Other questions or comments for Mr. Spencer?
Does this impact, how does this impact our annual maintenance for the network infrastructure?
So ideally, I mean, we will, you know, there's always maintenance costs with it, but ideally, we should also see a decrease in cost in overall maintenance because we also won't have to pay for old equipment. And some of our equipment is also going virtual, right? It's also like cloud-based, so that also saves us money when you don't have physical equipment on-premise too. So you will see a cost savings on the backend too, just with upkeep and things like that.
Any other questions or comments?
Just one more comment. I like the math. We're investing $64,000 of our operating budget and getting $1.7 million investment out of it. That seems like a pretty good math to me. Good job. Brian, you get credit too.
Okay, hearing other questions. I ask for a motion and a second to approve the network refresh project so as to allow the district to establish a predictable refresh cycle moving forward and avoid any disruption to core services as presented.
Move?
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a fourth action item, approval of updated 2022-2023 school calendar.
Yeah, just a quick, quick piece of background on that. That was on the consent agenda November the 8th. Has been designated as a state holiday only for this calendar year because of the election actually that's happened, that happened in the previous year as well. I think as a result primarily of the pandemic, the state made that adjustment. So November 8th, we have no choice. It is a required holiday all the way across. We had previously approved a calendar that showed that as a school day, and so we brought to you tonight as an amended calendar that would show that as a holiday, move that day to the very back end of the year. The one other recommended change we made with that, so that of the election week, that Friday was a workday slash teacher institute day, and so we recognized that would be a little bit of a goofy week. If you had school Monday, no school Tuesday, school Wednesday, Thursday, no school Friday. And so we worked with the calendar committee to look at moving that Friday workday institute day to Monday. So at least for families, it would just be a no school Monday, Tuesday. For our staff, it means they will be in on Monday for an institute or a workday. They'll be off Tuesday, but then back in Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, at least. A little more consistent week than the disruption. So that is the background and... I haven't answered any questions or...
I have a question about the holiday. So that's not anticipated to be the case in future years?
I don't anticipate that is going to be the case beyond this year.
I guess the concern I have with it is, again, the discrepancy between the first semester length and second semester length for the high school. So we go from a nine-day discrepancy to an 11-day discrepancy, and I just feel that's kind of significant. And yeah, quite. I know that there's a discussion about...
Turn that on.
When we were looking at high schools that end before winter break, Geneva High School was one that had 11-day discrepancy, and 11 was kind of our endpoint of trying to do this. So we felt with that...
So I...
That's just that, when we researched, that was a high school we saw that had 11 days between first semester and second semester.
And I did notice that with Geneva. Interesting, because I was kind of looking around to see what other discrepancies were apparent with districts. That was the one that was the largest, I think. I think other districts have solved the problem with moving up the start date of the school year, like starting the second week of August to make the semesters a little more balanced. That's just...
Yep. And so to step back to calendars, Angela, we actually asked our community a series of questions about the calendar. I will tell you that start date, so high school parents will say okay. Elementary, middle school parents will not be okay with that start date moving up that early. They've told us that pretty regularly and overwhelmingly when we've surveyed them, that you move up to that second week. I know there are districts that do that, but we get very considerable feedback from parents when you move up into that week.
I did look back at the survey results that you had shared prior to the approving initially the calendar, and I thought, my thought in reading through them was perhaps maybe this coming year, we could resurvey the populations.
We would certainly be happy in the coming year to ask folks again about preferences for calendar. When we asked that question, we asked not only about start date, we asked about some of the existing holidays and how folks felt about that, the full week off, because again, kind of unique nuance to us, right? It's the combination of when do you start? Do you take a full week at Thanksgiving, as we do? How you handle the placement of some other like institute days? So we asked about each of those things back, but we'd be happy to do that again.
And perhaps in asking the questions, because I think for elementary parents, the context may not be there of why of this discrepancy in the semesters. And so if you ask, oh, when would you like to start, rather than giving some context of why it might look better one way or the other, just some thoughts.
Sure.
Thank you.
And I think last little piece that I would say, right, every time we've made a calendar adjustment, first time lived experience, right? So certainly, our staff and our buildings are projecting what that's going to feel like with the discrepancy in semester. It really impacts a pretty small group of classes, but I think it'll be important to see what that feels like as we go through it, and that may drive us toward looking a little different at that moving forward.
Thank you.
So what's the, is there a result? Are we going to do a survey or not?
I think the request was in the future, look at the survey. The recommendation remains what's in your packet.
I guess, you know, as I look at this, if we were going to make a change, say, in the start of a school year, I feel we're kind of late in the process of doing that for families and for staff. People may have vacations and different things, and you know, I know this has been a concern of mine, you know, as we were looking, you know, throughout the year's calendar, something I've always paid very close attention to. I know that you alluded to the fact, it's very few. It really is just our high school semester classes that, you know, may be offered both front end and back end, you know, first semester, second semester, that are really impacted by that. It does not really affect our elementary, our middle, maybe a little with our middle schools, but with the, you know, the elective programs. But it's really just our high school students that have semester classes, correct?
Chris, could I offer?
Yeah.
So I've seen with our children, you know, sometimes they have that full year class, but at semester, they get a new teacher, like they're switched because of their schedule changes. So sometimes they don't always line up. I think the teachers try really hard to stay, you know, on track, but there's a little bit of that learning curve. I think it's not just always those single semester classes because you can have a change in teacher for a year-long class, if that makes sense.
I guess I could, I don't fully follow why the discrepancies. I'm interested in hearing your thoughts about why it's so damaging.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't know if I would use the word damaging, but you know, just less ideal. You know, if you, if we really don't need those 11 days in that course, you know, that's just kind of what it says to me. Like if semester one, you know, Algebra One, just to give an example, if I took that in semester one, I get 82 days. If I take it in semester two, I get 93 days. So 11 teaching days is kind of significant.
I don't, I think, I understand your point completely, and I think when you first look at this, and I know, I think we all had that reaction when this first came up. It's like, wait a minute, you know, and this, because this calendar was supposed to take effect two years ago, and so this conversation was had like four years ago, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And so, and I know that these discussions took place, and I think, I know what Dr. Schuler is saying, and I remember asking him about this too, that the number of classes that it really impacts, and that, and please correct me if I'm wrong, like this, there was discussions with the actual teachers about how this would work. And so I think what, well, I very much understand your point. I think the number of classes that it impacts and those that it does, the teachers have been involved in that conversation and how to address it. And so I think the, doing all of that work and looking at all of it again, I think it's impacting a small amount of our entire district. And so I think, again, please correct me if I'm wrong, that the, just doing all that work would impact a very small amount. And it's, and that small amount has been addressed by the district and the teaching staff. Is that correct? Am I correct in saying that?
Again, I guess we recapture by saying, no matter what, there, we're going to have to study that impact anyway, right? Whether Election Day had changed or not, there is a difference between the two semesters. It will be the first time that I think we've had that experience, and I think it's a fair request to say, you know, let's go into it with very open eyes to understanding that impact. I think we have a sense of what it is. Let's see what it is, and let's gather that data, you know, as we move through this year. And I think you mentioned a survey, and then we look at this moving forward, right? I think, you know, we knew with the, I think, the driving interest being to get that semester complete, final exams complete before winter break began, there were going to be some trade-offs for doing that. We've made that adjustment. We wanted to make it two years ago and had to make an alteration. So let's see that into next year, and I think if, you know, with the, I think the interest in the direction from the board, we will certainly study that and gather as appropriate some input into what that means for us moving forward. I don't know, I hear the concern. I don't know that the difference between nine and 11 in those two is going to be as significant of a change as just the concept of an imbalance semester, or what does that feel like. But I do agree with you, Chris, that at this point, to shift up that start, I think that would feel like a very significant change at this, you know, point. And I certainly wish we weren't having this conversation. Had that law not passed, that magically made it a holiday on Election Day this year, we wouldn't be. But agreed, you know, the recommendation remains, let's study that impact into this year. And ultimately, the question is, does the benefit of getting the finals done before winter break and the impact that that feels like outweigh the, sort of the imbalance of the semesters and what do we do about that?
And just to be clear too, the idea of having finals before break, that was a very strong community request, correct? And that was why it was done. And to your point, like you said, there's, there were some trade-offs for that. So that's what's driving all this is a very strong community request to have finals before winter break. So that's something to keep in mind too.
And wasn't it high school staff as well?
No doubt.
Was wanting finals before, finals before break?
Came from both places.
Are we taking into consideration, I think today was the day actually, that it was like a national testing day?
Today was.
Yes. So is that taken into consideration in that calendar? So is it really 10, or is it 11? Is it...
Yeah, there tend to be a few more assessment days in the back end of the year and altered days. But yes, we looked at all of that when it was brought to...
So today at the high school was considered a non-attendance day?
No, it's not considered a non-attendance day, but it's an attendance day as part of the second semester, but kids aren't in their classes, progressing through curriculum. They're taking an SAT or PSAT.
Okay. Thank you.
Just one quick one. AP exams occur in the fall and the spring semesters? AP?
Yeah, those are all typically, they're in the spring unless, yeah, they actually are all in the spring, even if it happens to be...
So they're year-long, so that discrepancy wouldn't even impact AP at all?
No, it can. They're a very, very small number of first semester AP classes, but those exams are still back end of the year. but those exams are still back end of the year.
And the start day for the 2022-23 school year is a Wednesday?
Correct.
I think it would be less impactful, like since it's a Wednesday, like moving it to a Tuesday doesn't seem huge.
But the staff would have to come back on Friday then, because there's, am I right? Is there two days of staff? So they would have to come back on Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I need a motion and a second for approval of updated 2022-2023 school calendar. So moved. Moved by Mrs. Booton?
Second.
Second by Mr. Paulson. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Next up is oral reports, our student learning feature. I see Mrs. Murphy's already up there.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update on student learning. Inside of your grouting folders, you will see a memo from me outlining information regarding middle school math instructional materials. Last month, I had the opportunity to talk to you about elementary instructional materials, and tonight, once again, speaking about math, but this time with middle school. And so this year, we have prioritized mathematics in our learning acceleration plan, and that is because learning concepts and skills, when you have academic gaps in the area of math, is very challenging. One of those learning acceleration strategies is to adopt a high-quality, standards-aligned instructional resource, and that is because it creates a strong coherence within a grade level and between grade levels. It provides teacher support that is aligned to best practices and instruction. It ensures long-term success by advancing learning and improving the achievement of all students. In your memo, you will see a timeline for that work. We actually began that in August of this school year, and the team that has been helping and supporting me with that work are the four middle school math coaches that we were able to add to each of your middle schools this year with the federal relief funding that we received. And so for the first part of the year, we spent our time researching best practices of instruction and researching high-quality resources. Our team made the selection of two materials to pilot, and those are illustrative mathematics, which is also the elementary resource that the board approved this evening, and Intu Math. Currently, our team is preparing for that pilot. Next school year for the first semester, our math teachers will be piloting two, those two resources, and they will be meeting to discuss their feedback and making a recommendation to myself. And then that recommendation will be brought to the Board of Education next year, and we'll have an opportunity as well for our community to, to, to review those resources and provide feedback. We would spend the end of next school year providing professional learning for our staff on the resource that we recommend for adoption, and then the implementation would begin in August of 2023. So I did just want to walk the board through that timeline for an adoption of a high-quality, standards-aligned resource in mathematics at our middle school level. Happy to take any questions if there are any. Any questions?
So we just approved Illustrated Math for K-5. As we go through the pilot, would be, that there be any concern that if the middle schools come back with the Intu Math, that there would be kind of a, I don't know, a sequence issue if we flip from one instructional material to a different one next year, or is that...
It's a very good question. No, we don't have that concern because both of the programs are aligned to the NCTM teaching practices that I shared with you last month, and they are both aligned to the same instructional standards.
Any other questions or comments from Mrs. Murphy?
Thank you.
Okay, written reports attached to the agenda are the monthly financial reports, FOIA report, board communication log, citizens advisory committee report, board committee reports attached were the notes from the teaching and board, teaching and learning committee, finance committee, equity proactive practices committee. Any other further information that needs to be shared about those? Are there any other reports from board members on other topics?
I have one. I just want to report that I got to spend an entire day at an international school, it's actually an international baccalaureate program, pre-K 3 to 12th grade, and one of, there's many things that I could share out with the board, but my favorite or most inspiring experience being in that space is that their, their language program is very well-developed. It's in the city of Atlanta, and they're leading, and the whole city is sort of following along. Public education is learning from their models and sort of adapting some of their language, immersion language models in the ways that's possible. But their three and four-year-olds don't have an option to learn in English. They choose Mandarin, Chinese, German, French, and Spanish. So all their three and four-year-olds are learning in another language in instruction, and we all, they all come together, just like Jefferson in the courtyard area, they talk to each other in English or interact and so on. And I was talking to the head of the preschool, and she was talking about all the benefits of language acquisition in the brain, not to mention cultural understanding and empathy, mutual respect, preparing children for global leadership. And I could go on and on about the benefits of this. Additionally, looking at public education and private education, I see it also as an equity issue of saying, you know, the children who, who are able to go to private school sometimes tend to have more wealth. And I'm just such a, I'm very passionate about public education, and when I see something that's just so, so good for children and for societies offered in private education, and I believe that it's a model that is possible in public education, I just want to see whether we can continue that conversation to see how we can really move ultimately, at a minimum, move our language learning way earlier, because middle school and high school starts just don't make sense for how we learn at all. There's not, there's not, I just, there's not a lot of research that supports that, I don't think. So if, if we can just continue to see what kinds of languages, language learning opportunities we can offer at much, much earlier levels, I'm, I'm very interested in those conversations.
Thank you, Dr. Yboah.
Where was that school? Just curious.
Atlanta International School.
Atlanta? What was that for?
I was, I just asked where the school was. It was in Atlanta, Georgia.
And what was the answer?
That, that is the answer.
Atlanta.
It's called Atlanta.
Atlanta.
Georgia, down south.
The Atlanta I didn't hear.
Any, Mr. Long?
Yeah, just one thing. There was a, a second, I think, of two trips. My daughter got to go to Spain on a orchestra trip that was canceled in March of 2020, and, you know, to my knowledge, I think most people ended up being okay in terms of cost recovery by selling to other students, but it was a, a really well-put-together trip. Mrs. Mayel, the orchestra teacher at North, that, that led it, did a really good job, and it was, you know, for my daughter and her, I don't know how many, maybe 60 or 70 kids, it might be a little bit over. Anyway, a really good trip, but really well-put-together, well-managed, and memorable experience for my daughter. So more personal than board, but I thought, I think the district did a really good job in the school of, you know, managing through that process, because it was an expensive trip.
Thank you, Mr. Long. Anybody else?
Real quick, and we're entering this recognition cycle. May 4th, Student Excellence Foundation is doing their Celebrate Our Stars Distinguished Educator Awards at Wheat North High School from 6:00 to 7:30. Jump on the Student Excellence Foundation website for details, but it's a really neat night to, to see what some of our teachers are doing and get them recognized. It's great. Plus, I think they're recognizing a retiree as well. Great stuff.
Thank you. Okay. Topics for future discussion, Vision 2026 strategic plan, community engagement report, social emotional learning report, innovation and technology update. Is there anything else board members want topics to be added? Okay, our next regular board meeting is May 11th here at Hubble at 7:00 PM. April 27th is our committee of the whole, 7:00 PM here again at Hubble. For, we're gonna go into closed session, so I move to adjourn closed session pursuant to Illinois Open Meetings Act exemptions 5ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 1, and 5ILCS 120/2, sub-paragraph C, sub-paragraph 10. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Action is expected following closed session.